This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is a responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. If you would please turn your cell phones to silent, that would be fantastic. Thank you. And do we have anyone signed up for public comment? All right, perfect. And I will move on to item number three, moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Let's go ahead and do a moment of silence and then we'll stand up for the pledge. Thank you. And pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, moving on to item number four, superintendent's report. Dr. Ken Cannon.
All right, good evening. Look at that new logo on that screen. That looks good. Wendy's celebrating there. Just one item tonight, but I'll try to be as short as I can, but I do have some things I want to say about accountability. This year's accountability ratings are expected to be released next Thursday, August the 15th, and as you know, we haven't received last year's ratings yet. And that's because a large number of districts, including Waco ISD, filed a petition for a temporary injunction to prevent those ratings from being released due to the commissioner's failure to follow the Texas Education Code timelines requirements regarding the communication of accountability, performance measures, methods, and procedures. And you guys may remember that I testified at that hearing last year, and I was very pleased to do so. Was really interesting, and I was glad to be there with other superintendents. I was also happy that we won that temporary injunction, and those ratings have not been released. TEA has now filed a brief with the Third Court of Appeals, and we are still waiting to hear of any decisions on last year. So we don't have those ratings, don't have those ratings, and since that time, there are some new issues with accountability and testing. Most notably, you probably have seen this in the media a lot, in December, we learned that the English one and two retesters across the state showed a large increase in the number of students who were scoring a zero on the essay portion of the assessments, which were scored with the use of AI rather than human graders, which we've always used human graders, and I've actually been in a number of years, but I've been to that training and understand that process of calibrating to score the written exams. And so that was a change that we didn't expect from TEA, and that created a lot of concern with superintendents across the state. Last month, Denise Bell shared our 2024 STAR results with you, and I want to say I believe they're lower than we expected, and I think in part because we're still learning about and adapting to the measures, methods, and procedures of the new test, and we didn't get those until after we had already taken the test in 2023. So technically, our 2024 data is the real first set of data that we have that was based on our assessing students with full knowledge of what those testing requirements would be. So that's really, this year was the only year that we actually knew what we were, the measures and methods. And so other than the use of AI scoring, you know, that's a big issue, which creates a concern. So we've had one year now to adapt to the information that we learned about last summer. And just to reflect on the history of testing, you know, I started teaching in 1990, and at that time, we were ending the teams test, and we were moving into the TOS test, whole new era of testing. And when the tax test came along in 2002, I was an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, and I was, of course, working closely with those state standards and accountability. And what I can tell you after 34 years is I know what I know. I know what I know about state testing and accountability. And what we're experiencing today is out of sync with the historical practices of testing and accountability in Texas from our education agency. We have always had, historically, had time to adapt to a new test with phase-in standards for accountability until now, and I think that's a problem. I also think that it's a problem that this year's data, accountability data, will include the achievement of students in the class of 2023, because when our students graduated in May of 2023, we didn't know the measures, methods, and procedures for the new STAR test, because some of that data runs a year behind in accountability. And in fact, we didn't get our new CCMR cut points until November of 2023. That was six months after the class of 2023 had already graduated. And once we got them, we learned that a score that was once an A is now a D, right? They raised it from a 60 to an 88 to get that A. And we shared that with you last month, and as you know, each of our high schools, under the 2022 standards, would have earned an A for CCMR for the class of 2023. That's not going to be the case, and you just can't change the rules of the game after you've already played the game. So kind of fast forward to 2019 in my history of testing, you know, the STAR test came out in 2019, and it was so different. And as a superintendent, I struggled with it, and we and our teachers struggled with it, trying to grasp and understand all of the complexities of the system, to understand how to use the data and how to even get an A, B, C, D, or F. And so it has been a challenge since 2019, and we've had, you know, we've had COVID, we've not had a test every year, we've had the new STAR 2.0, we've had additional changes. So it's not been a good experience with this, in this particular test. So that makes it hard for us to be successful, I think. So last year, there was some conversation in the hearing for the temporary injunction about the reliability and validity of the STAR test, and I was really glad I got to hear that, because it's going to be an important topic this go-around. And TEA was challenged even last year on whether or not they had complied with a provision in the law requiring that a third party evaluate the reliability of and the validity of the test. And of course, I listened to that testimony, I formed my own opinion listening, and one of the things that I heard was that TEA used a technical advisory committee, which was a group of people that they handpicked, which is not really a third party, in my mind, but that's, that was my opinion based on that testimony. And so now I'm hearing, with the ratings coming out next week, I'm hearing that there are districts who are planning to participate in the filing of a new petition for another temporary injunction to stop the release of the 2024 ratings. So I do expect that to happen. It should happen pretty soon, since ratings are expected to be released on the 15th. But I don't know if they'll win, right? I hope they do. I hope that they do, and we can talk about our participation, whether you all want to participate in that. I'm not recommending that we do that tonight, but I'm happy to have that conversation with you. So either way, I don't know if they're going to be released next week, if they are. I just want to caution anyone who is focused on that to be careful placing value or judgment on any school or district's rating, even if it's an A, because it don't tell the whole story. And I've said probably since 2019, it measures what it measures and it doesn't measure anything else. It's convoluted, it's difficult to understand without spending hours to do so, and it just shouldn't be that hard, I think. So I'm going to leave it at that for tonight, except to say that our teachers are work in wonders. Every single day with our kids and every single way in Waco ISD, and I believe in them, and I believe in our students, and that's all I have to say about that. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Patton.
I. Thank you, Dr. Ken Cannon, for what you're saying, and I wholeheartedly agree with you. I, as a former educator in classroom and on a campus, I really, really believe that this system that Texas Education Agency employs is unfair to students, to families, to different populations of the state. And I think it's unfair to the teachers who are busting their rear ends, day in and day out, doing incredible things for their kids, to at one point tell these kids who are happy and feel successful, you're going to take this test, and then the kids take it, and it's not what, it's not even on grade level. And there, right there, the validity of the test comes into question. Any teacher that you want to ask will tell you that STAR does not test on grade level. And to go one step further, the math test, I firmly believe, is really a reading test, just because of the immense amount of word problems. So for me, I would wholeheartedly support action should the board choose to do that later on, but I want to say thank you to you, and I want to say thank you to our teachers who are doing it every day, and for the students who come every day eager to learn and eager to be successful.
Thank you. Ochoa?
Just a brief comment. If, I don't want anyone to feel discouraged if they can't make sense of what's, of how the scoring is done. Dr. Ken Cannon and I remember a few summers ago sat in a breakout session at the school board conference, and it was about an hour long, and they were trying to explain how the scoring of the test went. And about an hour later, and several pages of notes later, I think people were more confused leaving that explanation than when we walked in. So it's not a A, B, C, D, like you're taking a math test at school. It's very confusing and difficult to make sense of.
There's a lot of formulas in there.
I just want to say, I really want to thank our teachers, our administrators, people who work with our kids, because I think what I see on campuses is something that a test won't tell you, and that is teachers teaching in incredible ways, that the moment I step into a classroom, my attention is captured, and I'm like, how does she do this? I mean, just really masterful, masterful instruction happening. I mean, I was telling someone today, I was like, you know, I have to look up things that my kindergarten daughter would tell me, because I'm like, what is diurnal? Do melbees don't have stinkers? What? And so I'm Googling, and I'm like, how did you learn this? She was like, at school. And there is, you know, and she's in kindergarten, and that, you know, or she was in kindergarten, and I just think, I just, whatever this rating says does not label this district. I mean, the state is trying to label it, but what I want to say to our teachers and our administrators, you're doing a fantastic job. We are seeing growth. I'm seeing it when we go in the classrooms, I'm seeing the engaged, engaging lessons, I'm seeing the classroom management, and I just want to say, hold your head up, keep going, because we're going to do it, and we're going to figure out this Tetris puzzle of a rating system, and we're just going to keep plowing, because our first job is not to appease TEA, our first job is to teach kids.
Okay, moving on to item number five, consent agenda. Mr. Grant, would you like anything pulled?
Do not.
Mr. Davis, would you like anything pulled?
No.
Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
And Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion on this, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on, we're going to switch order here, and we're going to move number seven up. Review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the proposed budget and tax rate for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Ms. Davis?
Okay, bubble in the bench, Jerry.
Is Jerry commanding your PowerPoint today?
Evidently.
There we go.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Fell asleep.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about the proposed budgets and tax rates. Should be not as long as it was in July, because we just had it in July. We've kind of been through all this stuff, so we're not going to talk about as much. We're going to kind of just briefly talk about our legal requirements, look at that enrollment, because I did bring some updated information that I think Mr. Gillery had asked for, and then talk about our final certified values that we did get on the 25th, and look at the general fund overview, and then the other budgets that we have to adopt as part of the official budget, and then there's a few special revenue funds that we are required to adopt because we're the fiscal agent of those funds. We have not really talked very much, we talked a little bit about debt service, but not much about those other funds. So our budgets have to be developed, when we develop, we have to do them on a modified accrual basis. So when you see that they match, those financial statements that you get when you get the fund financials, they're on the same basis, so they're going to be, you can compare the data much easier. We're a September 1st, districts can be either a July 1 through June 30, or September 1 through August 31. We have continued to be, it's popular now to move it to July, we've continued in September, for September. I have always kind of felt you don't get those certified values or anything until the end of July. I've always felt there's a little bit of a risk of adopting a budget when you don't know what those are going to be. We have to have a public hearing prior to the adoption of the budget and tax rate. That will be the same night, on the 22nd, as we adopt the budget, and then we are required to do a minimum 10-day notice. We'll look at that in a second. That notice is in the next agenda item, that you will adopt that date, this public hearing, and then we'll adopt the budgets. They have to be adopted by the 31st, so those will be on the, on the 22nd. The last day to adopt a tax rate is September 30. We typically go ahead and adopt that with the budget on the 22nd, but it has to be adopted after the budget's adopted. You must adopt the budget first. So this is basically the budgets that we have in our official budget. We are required to adopt budgets for the general fund, the child nutrition fund, and our debt service fund. We, in those special revenue funds, we have some other funds, as I said, we're fiscal agent on a few funds, so we adopt budgets for them too. So you see down below, child nutrition is, of course, the biggest bulk of that, and then we have the greater Waco Advanced Academies, Guam and Guaca, and the Challenge Academy and the Regional Day School for the Deaf. So looking at the factors, that, and some of these things actually maybe affect the budget this year because of the lack of them, rather than a positive. So of course, our student attendance enrollment, that's been a big factor for the last five years because of the declines. Attendance is up slightly, as we talked about last month, but enrollment still has continued to decline. Our property values, they've been, last year was, last couple of years was a huge increase in property values. This year, they're very flat. So we'll talk about that. They actually ended up, certified values ended up a little bit lower than what I was projecting last month, based on the preliminary rates. State legislation, lack of. There's one, lack of, lack of any action to get us any more money. And then, of course, the available federal fund is huge on this budget this year because of those ESER funds going away and us trying to absorb some of those costs that we wanted to continue, like librarians and some of the supplemental instruction teachers. Recruitment and retention, unfortunately, we're really not able to do much in this budget for that because of the situation we find ourselves in. We were not able to do a lot for salary increases. There is some for benefit increases. There was about a 1% increase incorporated into this for teacher salaries that moves up on the schedule. And then inflation and other unavoidable cost increases, they were a little bit more of an impact than they normally are because of lots of things. Again, insurance is, both property insurance and health insurance, and then utilities and all those other things that we have to still do, but we'll have to just absorb the cost, even if you do have $15 million deficit. So our budget goals, we really did try with this budget, even though we knew we had to make cuts to maintain all of our core programs, and even some of those that were, we were doing from ESER, as I said. Safety has, is one of the things we talked about last time, huge increase to fund that roll call to keep officers on the campus. Staffing, again, didn't do a whole lot with that. Main thing probably this year was financial, just to protect the district's financial position and our infrastructure. So the funding to school districts basically comes from two main sources, property taxes and the foundation school program. Those values that we just talked about, plus the tax rate generates the property taxes. We do have, the MNO rate, based on the law that was passed with HB3 in 2019, the MNO rate is getting compressed every year, and there was a large compression last year with the, and the big homestead exemption, so our rate has really gone down a lot. We'll talk about that briefly. And we do have additional enrichment pennies from our tax ratification election that we did in 2015. We still have, those have been compressed a little bit, because your copper pennies were compressed, but we still do get a lot of money off of those enrichment pennies. And then on our state foundation school program, those formulas, again, are set in legislature. The basic allotment of $6,160 has not increased since 2019, and all of our allotments that make up our state revenue are also impacted by those enrollments and our average daily attendance, the mix of students that we have in special populations, also impacted by how wealthy we are and what those tax collections are. As we've talked before, almost, again, this year, almost 90% of our general fund revenues come from those two funding sources. We have very little funds, and that's probably a little on low side compared to previous years, just because of that increase in interest revenue and that huge indirect cost we're getting from those ESER funds, which also, that goes away next year, and we'll talk a little bit about interest income. But so, as we've always said, when property values and tax collections go up, then state foundation school program goes down. Looking a little bit at our enrollment and attendance, like I said, we talked about this a lot last month, so I don't really want to spend a lot of time. I just wanted to mention what the special programs areas are that we get funded on, bilingual, career and technology, compensatory education, dyslexia. We now, with the House Bill 3 in 2019, we got this, the dyslexia and the early childhood allotments, we also get gifted and talented money, and of course, the special ed funding, which has grown considerably. We did get that safety and new instructional facilities allotment, that safety allotment was increased last year, that's probably some of the little bit of state funding we got, not nearly enough to cover what we had to do with it, but we did have an increase there. And when we look at revenues, we'll see where we got that new instructional facilities allotment as well. So this is basically what, we looked at this schedule last year, last month, we are using a projected enrollment of $13,294, which is 223 students less than we, than we had this past year, and a projected average daily attendance of $11,645, which is 171 students less. This is basically what we have looked like for the last few years. We've had a 13% drop in average daily attendance and a 9.8%, almost 10% drop in enrollment. Now, last month, I brought this enrollment and what it looked like over the five years by grade span with pre-K, elementary, middle school, and high school, and Mr. Gillery asked about, I think, first grade and kinder. So I did break out the elementary grade levels here, so you could see what those looked like over the last five years. Again, at the lowest levels, there's a higher drop-off with, you see kindergarten at 14.3% decrease, first grade at 15.1, and then up to fifth grade, it's an 8.9% decrease. There's little bubbles in there, sometimes it has more to do with retentions than it does with actual births or age appropriate, or age groups. So looking now at our property values, we have received our, the current state certified property values, and they are used in calculating these formulas for state foundation school program. And one of the things that has been different also since 2019, we used to use certified values from the state from the prior year, so we knew what those numbers are. Now, we have to use current year values. I just got this week my certi, no, I didn't get my certified values, I got my appeal. So we do not yet have our state certified values for this past fiscal year. So we had to develop budgets and project revenues and all, and not actually have. We got some preliminary values in, pre-preliminary in December, we got preliminary values in January. I did appeal those, so I did get an answer on my appeal. I've been using those appealed values, so that was positive for us, and I've been using those in my calculations this year. But, and we also, to get some good news, because we also appealed our 22 values again, and we will probably see about $1 million from that. I don't know if it'll come in in this year's financials, or it will be in next year.
You repeat that number, I couldn't hear.
About $1 million.
That's a good number.
Yeah, so if we get it in time to book it into this year's financial statements, it'll reflect there. If we don't get it by the time I finish journal entries about end of October, then it'll probably hit next year's. If we don't get it by the time I finish journal entries about end of October, then it'll probably hit next year's. So the difference in our values are for, between the state values and our local values are really related to our local exemptions. We don't have a lot of these free port exemption, lease vehicles, pollution control, so solar energy, TIF. TIF is one that ha, is, does make a difference between the two values. So the SMA two, T2 value for the state funding purposes is eight point, about 8.6 billion dollars. This is what our local values look like, based on those certified values that we received on the 25th. Last year, those value, and I think this is very deceptive because of the fact that we had such gigantic adjustments in our values this past year. We had, we, at this point, they're running 7.7 million dollars levy adjustment. Not just value adjustment, but 7.7 million and a levy adjustment downward. So that is, like I said, is kind of misleading to look at what the gains and losses of. I think if you look, you know, it says over our prior year, that was actually certified, it's a 0.49% increase. If I actually look at what those adjusted values are, it was a 1.49% increase. So it made a big difference in what we were able to collect. And again, it's about a, almost a 6% decrease from what they gave us back in April for our preliminary values. Oh, I said, I said 1.49, it's 4.09, sorry. I'm reading this right. Okay, so then, here's our other effective tax rate assumptions. We have new market value of 249 million dollars. We have new taxable value on our, in our certified values of 212 million dollars. There are new exemption value loss of 30 million. Last year, on our average homestead value, we had 14,243 homesteads. This year, we have 14,631. So we do have an increase in homesteads. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's an increase in homes. It means that more people, I think with that $100,000 homestead exemption, really made an effort to get, going file for the homestead exemption. The average market value of our residences went from 231,937 to 240,714. The average homestead residence exemptions went from 137,370 to 129,980. And then our average taxable value of residences went from 96,845 to 110,727. And this will all be published as part of our notice that we have to publish this weekend in the newspaper. Looking then at these property values and our current and delinquent tax collections, based on our tax information survey, we had current and delinquent tax collections in the M and O side of six, and this is current year, that we have to report to the state so they can help us set a tax rate of 63 million. To another 21.6 million for our INS funds, so we had total M and O tax collections of 84.7 million. We had levied 86.8. Our M and O payments into the TIF were only 105,000 this year because we are only in that very small TIF, number three. Then our tax refunds that we are required to report are $56,000. This is a very specific kind of tax refund. It's, we had a lot more refunds, but they don't, aren't required to be reported in this particular schedule. Our net M and O collections for the summary of finances is 63, about 63.1 million. Because that takes, it does take out the TIF and some other things from that. Current year till, collection rate is 97%. This is for this past year. Our year, last, the year before, it was 103%, and then the year before that, it was 98%. Our tax office certified a collection rate of 100% for us. Now, I will tell you, I'm not using 100% because it was so bad this year, and we, it drew down our debt service fund balance, and we'll look at that by 30%. And so I, we are able to use any of these rates that are certified here. I'm using the 98% just to give us a little bit of a pad in that debt service fund because we really can't afford to draw that down much. We don't keep a big, you know, we have like $4 million. You draw it down 30%. We drew it down like a million four, so, anyway, so I'm using 98% for this coming year, which does drive up the tax rate just a little bit for that. And then I, we did not have any excess tax collections this year. We did last year. That's another reason that our fund balance was drawn down in debt service because of that 103% from the la, the prior year. I had to draw down the fund balance about 800,000 because of excess collections. And if we do have excess collections with using this 98% rate, then they will also be used in the following year to help fund and would be, we would be able to kind of lower our rate perhaps with that. In calculating that tax rate, as I mentioned, you know, we're, we have this compressed rate. So they start out with a comptroller certified value from 2023, and that is the one that we had appealed. And then the, the chief appraiser, local values, 9.2 million, billion. And our chief appraisers estimate certified values, 9.237. Central appraisal value growth was that 0.49%. And then we calculate a new comptroller's value based on that. The maximum that we hit, we have for a compressed tax rate is this 0.6281. And we have that limitation on it of 0.6169. So we get to use the less, or the state compression percentage is 0.6855. So the state has certified us with this local limited under law of 0.6281. So that is what our limitation on our, that's our compressed rate. We add our pennies, eight cents golden pennies and 5.83 cents of copper pennies for a tax rate of 0.7664. I think four or five years ago, it was a dollar four. It's been compressed this much at this. No, it was a dollar 17, because we had a dollar four plus a 13 cents of enrichment. So we're down from a dollar 17 to 0.76 cents, or 76 cents. Our INS rate that we will need to pay our debt service is 22,8254. So we'll have a total approved voter rate of a dollar 4894. This is the comparison to last year of that rate. As I said, the actual, the, the maintenance and operations rate, the 7664, because the values across the state did not increase very much, we didn't have to compress anymore. So we're still at that 0.7664 in M and O. Our interest and sinking went from 26.2187 cents to 28.25. So it's a two cent increase. I think last time, we were looking at about a cent and a half. Since the, the values did not go up as high, and I'm using a little bit lower collection rate, it's going to be about two cents. So our total tax rate again is, will be a dollar 4894, which is that same increase from the debt service rate because we did not increase the M and O rate at all. It still is lower, as I mentioned last time. We had promoted during the bond election that that would be about 32 cents this year, so we're still about four cents under what that was proposed to be. This just gives you an idea of what those tax rates have looked like over the years, and you can see how much they've gone down. Kind of labeled them where those changes occurred from no tax rate compression at the very beginning to that first year of compression back in 2006. We went down, I think, to, from the dollar 50 down to 33 cents, a dollar 33, and then down to the dollar four that following year. And then back in 2015, our, it went up. That's when we had the voter approval, the TRE. And then when, in 2019, with HB three and the implementation of tax compression, you can see as it starts to go down. Talking now a little bit about our proposed budgets. We've talked a little, we've talked a lot about revenue challenges, the continuing enrollment and average daily attendance declines. We had the property values. I said they were currently misstated due to the TIF three. They are now corrected as of, I think, Monday, I got the, the approval. The interest rates are scheduled to decrease. More information on that. They did have a meeting, and they are probably going to take it down, I think, about 25 basis points next month. So it is, we're, I guess we're going to start seeing that decline in interest rates. We've had that loss of foundation school program revenue for the 1882 partnership. That was about a mil, between a million three, million four. Loss of indirect cost revenue from those federal stimulus funds. And then the loss of Medicaid funding that we've talked a lot about, that was about a million four overall. We hadn't budgeted quite that much, so it really only impacted us because I was kind of prepared for that to happen, so I think we actually lost about 800,000. On those expenditure challenges, we had absorbed quite, about 3.8 million of positions out of S R. We had those rate increases. We had some current budget shortfalls, including substitutes. And then we, and we're, the health insurance fund. We had the transportation transition, and then some mandated in programs increased, particularly special ed and safety. And then, as we talked last time, a lack of funding in some of our, our areas that we probably, we do need to address in the, if not this year, in the, in the next few years. So this is kind of what it looks like for this year. Looks, we had a beginning fund balance of 57, right at 58 million dollars. Right now, I'm projecting a deficit of about 536,000 in the current year. We budgeted about a $4 million deficit. Always underspend that. So it looks like we're going to have an ending, a beginning fund balance for this next year of about 47 point, 47 and a half, 57 and a half million. We have estimated revenues of 154.9. Proposed appropriations in this budget of 162.6. And that gives us revenues, our expenditures of 7.6 million. We have operating transfers of 535,000. Those cover the deficits for Guam, Guaca, and the day school for the deaf. Challenge Academy lives on a shoestring, and we don't usually have to move money into that. So the net change in fund balance for this proposed budget will be 8.1 million dollars, and that would make the proposed ending fund balance of 49.3, or 30%. We always underspend the budget. It doesn't seem how, to matter much how much we cut. The last few years, we have, before, we, we had some of these this year, but we have probably underspent maybe 4 million, 5 million. I don't think, it, it might be that this year, so instead of a deficit of 8 million, it could be somewhere around four or five. Hard to say because we've had a lot of extra money to spend. So a lot of what's been left over in the general fund are actually things like tutoring money that we were using S R funds for. So we have probably underspent the general fund to a greater degree in the last few years because of the availability of the federal funds. We don't have those, so I think people will go back to having to use their general funds and have probably some lesser amount of expend, of under expenditure for this coming year. This basically is what it looks like over the last few years. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, going through the detail, but I just wanted to provide this so you could tell the difference in our revenues. Last year, audited revenues were 155.4 million. We started out with budgeted revenues of 157.6. Looks like those are actually going to be a little bit higher. Going to talk about why some of that is higher. And then we're looking at revenues for proposed budget of 154.9. Budget last year was hun, or for audited for 2223 was 153.3. We adopted a budget of 161.7. Looks like we're going to spend about 160.7 there. And then, again, we have some other financing sources. And those other financing sources are also up in the expenditures because with the implementation of a GASB announcement on leases, we show those coming in, those leases coming in as, as a other financing source, but they're also in expenditures. Those silly things that don't make any difference, but we've got to report them. Then our financing uses that you see there are those amounts that we transfer to those special revenue funds. Again, and we talked about what those, that beginning fund balance and what that ending fund balance is going to look like. So what we funded in here, budget reductions. We cut from the general fund 91 positions overall. There was actually more cut, but then some got added back. So in, net positions that were cut were 91, and from all the funding sources in the general fund. The salary savings was 5.3 million dollars of that, because that is net. And part of the big difference with this 91, because originally we were saying 150, around 150, is transportation. Because this 91 is net of about 70 positions going in for transportation. Anyway, so that's 2.9 million in additional positions for the transportation, bringing that in-house. We had related benefit cuts on those of 1.1 million. And then we had non-payroll budget cuts of about just under a million, 0.8, 800,000 dollars. On the increases, as I said, we absorbed those S R funded positions of 3.6 million. We had salary and benefit increases. The increase on the teacher scale was 0.45 million. Stipend increases was about 60,000 dollars that we, in there in the compensation plan, I think, tonight to approve. The TRS mandatory rate increase was about half a million. And then that increase in the health insurance contribution, 15% is 1.8. Now, we did not increase our contribution to health insurance last year, so this, it comes out to about a seven and a half per year. So that's running, actually is running about 8.4 right now. So it's not, not out of line, I think, with what's happening with health insurance across all school districts and probably all entities. So the transportation transition in-house service is a 1.2 million increase overall. We'll talk about that because I did, that actually came down some. Our unavoidable, because I think we were just talking about 2.1 million or something before. Well, that was my big mistake in the budget right there. Our unavoidable rate increases, including substitute costs, was 1.6 million dollars. And then we had, I did put some supplemental funding on some of those budgets that we talked about of about 700,000. There were some additional requests, and then I added some funds to some of those budgets. I just want to put this in here. This kind of came out this week from Legislative Budget Board. So these are state numbers. These are not my, these are coming out from the LBB. And they put this chart out that basically showed what was happening with education funding in constant dollars. So that line that you see going through that graph is a constant dollar line. That's what this, this is our, well, our, let me go, let me go the other direction first. No, here. Bottom line there. Okay, constant dollar at the bottom of this schedule. So when we look at that, we apply the LBB's constant dollar figures to our revenues. And I have kind of, we'll talk a little bit about my Christmas tree here. But that means, and the revenues in 2021 of 156.8 million are equal to about 129 million right now, when you put them in constant dollars. So we are trying to operate and do all the things we're doing with, you know, almost 30 million dollars less, 27 million, so, in buying power. Looking at this, I just wanted to kind of, I, I kind of did this for myself. Looking at this, I just wanted to kind of, I kind of did this for myself so I could feel reassured a little bit about where we were with revenues. And I highlighted green when it went up, red when it went down for some reason. And you can see local property tax revenue. We took that hit this year because of all of those adjustments. 78 million last year. We took the, they had the homestead exemption and those adjustments went down to 63.7.8 million. So it should be fairly flat for the next year. Earnings on investments, you see those where we went up, you know, 2021, 22, we made 121,000 dollars. Rates were so low, we really were not generating hardly any interest revenues. So we made 121,000. The year after that, 3.2 million. This year, we're looking at 4.7 million dollars in investment income. Again, I've only budgeted 2.5 million dollars for next year. If they start taking it down, I don't know how fast it's going to go down. I'm hoping it doesn't go down too fast, but that is one of the differences. In 2021, 22, you see those other local revenues. That was when the TIF number one ended and that's the money that we got out of the closure of that TIF. And then the pass-through collections for the tax increment fund and insurance recoveries, those basically are ins and outs for, we get TIF money that, and then we have to pass it back to the TIF zone. And then interest re, income, I mean, insurance recoveries that we basically had to repair items with. You see the next line, that intermediate source revenue, that million dollars first payment on Paul Tyson that we got, and then it's been about 300,000 since then. I think that this will be paid off if, I think there may be one more payment after the 2425 fiscal year. On our state foundation school program, you kind of see those same offsets as we've talked about between tax revenue and the state revenue. I've got some lines down below that I want to talk about because part of what you're going to see in that state revenue down here in the blue, these are things that are going to go away and that, or might be temporary. We lose the contract to operate the 1882 campuses, the TZ zones. You can see that in 2021, that was 1.8 million dollars. And that was slowly going down to this year, it's about 1.5 million dollars. We, in this year's budget and in next year's budget, we did, I did apply for the new instructional facilities allotment that we can get to help with when you build a new school. As long as you completely tear down the old school, if you leave even one wing, you can't get the money. But if you completely tear down the old school and build a school, you can get 1,000 dollars per ADA to help with supplies and materials for the new school. And then our teacher incentive allotment. You saw, I don't have anything budgeted right now for next year. I usually amend that into the budget as we know what that's going to be. But we received a million three last year and 2.3, almost 2.3 this year. And that's, you know, one of the things that we do, I think, in this district that, to help retain teachers. So then the only other thing would be on the, I have highlighted here kind of is that indirect cost recoveries and those Medicaid reimbursements that you see under the federal that we've had. Indirect cost recoveries the past few years, going from 2.4 to about 2.8 million this year. Expect that to drop off because we won't get that on the ESAR funds. And then down below it, those Medicaid reimbursements, you see that we were getting 2.7 up through 3 million and now that's dropping down. There was some discussion that we would actually get a little bit of a bump in that rate for next year. But I got the cost factors and it actually went down for us. So that's going to, I'm estimating that's going to go from 1.8 down to about 1.7 million. So as I said, I kind of wanted to do this so I could see what our base revenues are without some of these special things in there. And so our base revenue is about 153 million without all those other things. So that kind of gave me a little bit of better feeling, I think, as we were going through this of what that baseline is on revenue. Revenues are always more interesting than expenditures. So child nutrition fund, you know, while the debt service fund just keeps going down, I just, we just can't seem to spend the child nutrition fund. It just keeps going up. And as hard as Cliff tries this year, he had a plan to do some walk-in freezers and all for, to help spend this fund balance down. And I don't think we're the only ones with this problem. But when he put his proposal forward, I said, well, there's only one problem with this. Maintenance doesn't have enough money to do the construction to, so we could install these freezers. And so we don't have the maintenance funds. And so he can't spend his money on these walk-in freezers because TDA won't allow us to do the building work, the construction work, to do this out of food service money. So anyway, that has increased. We still do have quite a bit. We've increased the salaries quite a bit. We didn't have a lot of overtime this past year because Cliff was better able to keep his positions filled. Now, TDA has come. We were only able to keep three months' worth of fund balance before and they have increased that to six months because everybody, I think, is kind of in the same situation. It's been hard to spend the money, hard to get the equipment in and spend the money. So we have a total revenue projected of 11.5 million for next year. Total expenditures of 12.3. That would be revenue, expenditures over revenues of about 836,000. We are estimating right now, beginning fund balance is 6.8 million. And that would make an ending fund balance of about 5.9 million, or about 48% of our annual expenditures. Still think we need to start serving steak in the cafeterias to start spending the money down. Debt service. This is one, one I want to talk a little bit more about. As we talked about, these adjustments to our levy this year really, we really took a hit on our debt service fund. We started out with a ending fund balance last year of about 5 million. Or we had, yes, started out with 5 million, 5.1 million dollars. And it looks like right now, our projected actuals, we will draw down that fund balance by about a million four, down to about 3.5 million dollars, 3.6 million dollars, which is about 14.1% fund balance. Coming into this next year with the tax rate that I set, we should be in a break-even position. That's the way I developed it and the way we're kind of required to develop it. So hopefully we'll keep that 3.6 million dollars. Now, one thing that doesn't really go into that calculation is interest revenue. We don't make a lot of interest revenue on debt service because the fund balance is so low. But I did, this year, when those adjustments started happening, I invested that money as much as I could and made it. So we just got a term bond that came due that we made 155,000 dollars on the interest revenue for this fund. So that, that's going to help out a little bit. So again, I'm not sure how much interest we, I haven't budgeted a whole lot for interest for this fund either for next year. But if we do, in the next few years, want to sell bonds, it's really important that this fund balance does not decrease, that we can keep this at an adequate amount and maybe even get it up a little bit because that is one of the things. That, and frankly, our general fund right now, if they look at our general fund with an 8 million dollar deficit, that's, that doesn't help your bond ratings either. Bond ratings get lowered, then your interest rates go up and your borrowing costs you a lot more to do projects. So our other special revenue funds that are adopted by the board, as I said, there's basically three funds. The Greater Waco Advanced Academies are in our 497 fund. They're broken out into two pieces, in the Healthcare Academy and the Manuf, and Guam, the Manufacturing Academy. We're looking at a shortfall of about 235,000 right now in the Healthcare Academy and 190,000 in the Advanced Manufacturing Academy. This is a little bit better than it was this past year. We did do some things. Dale McCall is now over both programs. So we kind of, we didn't fund a second principal, if you will, director of that program. And so he's split between the two as is a counselor. And that helped us bring down some of that from what we have had to do in the past. And then the Challenge Academy, again, 981,000 in revenue. And it's always budgeted to break even. We do charge the, the other districts a participation fee. They pay a 1,500 dollar annual fee. And then they pay a daily rate for every day that their kids are in. We have two different programs. We have a discretionary program at the Challenge Academy. And then if they're in the detention center and we, because we furnish teachers for the detention center, so they also have a rate that they pay for those kids. And then our regional day school for the deaf, the revenues there are projected to be 662,000, expenditures of 772,000. So I'm expecting about 110,000 dollar loss there that, again, we make those up through our, through operating transfers from the general fund. So that's it for tonight for the proposed budget. We will have the budget and tax rate meeting before the regular meeting on the 22nd. And then on the 22nd, there are, will be agenda items to adopt the budget and another agenda item, following it by an agenda item to adopt the tax rate. The first day of the fiscal year is September 1st.
Yes, Mr. Grant?
Couple of comments and a couple of questions, I'm sorry. First, great sympathy to our ASL translators on translating through this whole conversation without a break. I recall that the cost of gas in 2020 was about a buck ninety. And our state allotment was just over 6,000 dollars per student. The cost of gas has gone up quite a bit since then and our state allotment is still right at 6,000 dollars. I'm curious about two things. One, the, our SRO status, are we fully filled in all those positions? But my main question is, is this, last year, I remember the state was really generous and offered us, I think, 15,000 dollars per person they required us to hire.
Per campus.
Per campus, yes, per officer. We had, are they still being that generous and offering that? Or was that a one-time deal? And then are all those campuses now filled? Are we still at the same ratio to where we have to hire hourly folks?
That is a continuing allotment. And Chief Goodman can tell you what, how many positions we have vacant still and how many.
Because I think it was more expensive to, to hire the temporary people, wasn't it, than a permanent person or no?
So to answer your first question, when I started in June 17th, we had 13 openings. We physically have five that have started. One will start in November, making the sixth, and another one should start in October. So seven of 13 positions.
Okay.
Filled, leaving us with six.
Okay.
So that's good news. And then roll call will fill the vacancies until we get to that number of 31. The second question, I'm going to let her answer as far as, we were paying 50 dollars an hour, you know, for the roll call officers. So I don't know what, if you take in benefits, what that would look like compared to a full-time.
I'm just curious if it's a savings to use roll call or if it's, if it's even more expensive with the generous 15,000 dollars?
50 dollars times eight-hour day times 173.
We have, we're estimated, close to a million, I think, if, if.
That's fine, that's fine.
So let's just say, to put it in perspective, we got half a million dollars from the state for the safety allotment. We spent a million dollars on roll call.
That's what I thought, on roll call?
Yes.
Just on roll call? Okay, wow. My last question, I think since I've been on the board the three years, we've always underspent our budget, like you said. Last year, we projected a 4 million dollar deficit. You only, we were 500,000 short. Thank you for that. We're projecting 8 million dollars this year and will probably not quite spend that much. All the time that I've been on the board, though, ESAR funds were involved. I'm assuming that those shortfall, not having such a great shortfall, was offset even more by having ESAR funds available? Will that trend, do you think, of underspending our budget be challenged by us not having any ESAR support down the road where it'll be even harder to underspend our budget?
A little bit. I would say that even before ESAR, we were probably underspending our budget 3 million a year.
Okay.
So it's, and some of it depends on, frankly, on keeping positions filled.
Right, right.
That's where a lot of our salary savings, especially in, in function 11 and instruction, comes from that. So I would say we probably, I would think even without ESAR funds, we're probably going to underspend this budget by 3 million dollars.
I want, I want, I'd probably add a little bit to that. You know, we added the positions into the budget that we need, that we decided to keep. Everything else were mostly things that were extra that we hadn't been doing. And except, I could think of some tutorial money that will be a loss for our campuses that they'll, that we'll have to pick up either in our, probably Title I or local budgets. But we did a lot of, you know, we put, invested a lot of money in libraries. You know, we did some big-ticket item things that we won't be doing again. So, so I don't know that we'll fill it as much as we think we might.
I mean, a lot of what I was looking, I was doing some projections today as of the end of June because I have got, I kind of need to do an amendment if we have any functions that look like they might have a shortfall. And so, so much of what I was going through were to, were extra duty in function 11 in comp ed because they were spending all that ESAR money. And so that money wasn't getting spent in the general fund. And so a lot of that under expenditures and that. And remember, part of this under expenditure in this budget is a million dollars for roofs that we got insurance on, set aside, and we haven't touched it yet. So it's going to roll forward into next year and be spent in next year. I think that's the only real big amount we, no. I don't think we have buses in yet. We ordered about a million, 1 in buses. And I think they actually, I was projecting they were going to be in by the end of the year because they were supposed to be, but they may not be. So that may be a little bit better picture if the buses don't come in. But that means we just.
It'll hit down the road.
We'll just have a bigger hit on next year to pay for those buses. And then there were some police cars. I think those are the only things we kind of have hanging out there that are big amounts that might roll forward now. I didn't have as fancy a presentation this time because I spent a lot of time looking for a million dollars. Because it's been 25 years since I accounted for transportation in-house. And I forgot something when I was developing, I just knew it was wrong. I, I knew this budget was wrong. I knew what it was supposed to be when we ended up. It was a million dollars higher than it was supposed to be. Transportation was not supposed to cost us 2 million dollars more. It was supposed to be more like 900,000. And I knew it was there and I looked, I told Dr. Kinkanen, I said, I kept looking at all the numbers that were there and I forgot to look for what wasn't there. Because when you do transportation in-house, you have an internal billing that you bill like special ed and some of the other departments. What I didn't budget for was the revenue that transportation gets from that. So that brought this down and I was able to do our additional requests and bring that from 9.2 million. I had actually got it down below because I was determined it wasn't going to be 9 million. But when I found that, I was so relieved. But we got that fixed and his, it's still 8.1, but it's not, it's not 9.1.
Reality may be more like 5.
Hopefully, hopefully. That's why, and that's why I feel better. We may have to cut a few million this next year.
Yeah.
To really start getting us back into a good position. Maybe the state comes up with some money. And so I wouldn't want to have to cut. And so I wouldn't want to have to cut too terribly much next year before we kind of know where we are with legislative session. Some of the talk is that they will just put money into teacher salaries, like they did in two thousand and seventeen. What I would hope for, if they do something like that, they will do it like they did, I think it was that year, and then with House Bill Three, they actually only made us put seventy-five percent of that money into teacher salaries. And we could use that other twenty-five percent for, like auxiliary apparel. Couldn't use it for administrators, but we could use it for auxiliary apparel. And that would at least give us money maybe next year for salary increase.
It'd be really, really great if we didn't have those restrictions. Though we want to take care of our employees, but with inflation and those other areas, we really don't need to have the state telling us how to spend it. We, we need to be able to make some decisions locally.
And I'd encourage us to write our state legislator and our potential state legislators, one of them is in the room, of the importance of raising the student allotment. I mean, nothing is gonna get better until we can raise the student allotment. And that's gonna, you know, that really needs to be more like eight or nine thousand dollars a student, and not six point something.
Yeah, on that, I think we're currently four thousand dollars behind the national average.
Oh, we are. We are, like, it's sixty percent of what the national average is per student. We're number forty-two.
We're at the bottom.
You have, also have in your packet a copy of the official budget that has the detail by function, which is the way that it has to be adopted. And then you have this other schedule that, sort of meaningless, but it's required by law that we will be posted on our website. And it combines the debt service fund, the food service fund, and the general fund altogether into this, this statement that we have to publish. So anyway, those are both in your packets. And there isn't any action on this particular item. There is on the next one, so you can.
Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa has a question.
Or just a, well.
Or comment.
A question, comment. First, I want to say thank you, because I can't imagine how many hours and how many meetings you sat through trying to get this budget done. I know it was probably a group, group effort in a lot of ways. You being the voice with the most budget experience in the room, is there, is there anything you would personally change on the budget? I mean, I know there was a lot of, of cutting involved. But just some Cheryl insight.
And I think we can, that eight hundred thousand that we got out of supplies and materials, frankly, I didn't hear enough crying. So I think we could take some more next year, that it won't be, I really don't think that it impacted campuses and departments terribly. Some areas, yes, like those areas that I talked about maintenance, and some of those really need to have some supplemental funds. From this point, and I don't think we want to cut programs, because I don't, you know, we were talking about athletics, fine arts, things like that. I don't think we want to do that. And I think that, you know, it may be, Daniel did a good job this year of looking and tightening staffing guidelines and making sure that they were adhered to. That's where we got a lot of our cuts, were out of our staffing guidelines. So I think there could be maybe another look at that. But this is not, no, somebody said something, and I'm like, this is not something I do. It's not something I can do. First of all, I can't cut people's jobs. He can do that, I can't. Secondly, the program people have to make those decisions on what maybe we can do without. You know, we can look at it, and I can, again, play with numbers and tighten them up as much as I can whenever I see something. And I did that. I do, at the end of the process, go through people's budgets. And if I see that they have more, I will make cuts. But it's not something that you can do by yourself in finance. It requires the administration really to do that.
Absolutely.
And it has to be a joint effort of people looking at that. And again, most of those meetings I sat through were his meetings. I sat through all of the meetings that Daniel had with people. I don't know if, I think he wanted me to be the main face in the room. But, you know, those, those were very difficult. I think that is the, the next step would be to maybe tighten up staffing guidelines and looking at that, looking at contract links, if, if it gets to that point, that we're not getting new money and we have to cut. That may be more of what we're gonna have to do. There's a lot of districts that the elementary principals are on shorter contracts. And, you know, something, something we'd have to.
Do you mind if I add something to that? I, we're lots of days of sitting in the conference room, talking about positions and programs. And it was especially challenging because we were losing ESER money. But also, when we were cutting positions, a lot of those were in some of our federal programs or in state comp. And so it was a big puzzle this year, right? And we were, there were lots of moves, moving from this budget, eliminating, moving this one from this budget to that budget. So it was really complicated, and it was really stressful. And it really was a team effort. So I want to thank everyone who participated in that, from Cheryl to Daniel to CNI to federal programs. It was hard. It was a really hard, stressful spring working through that. So, yeah. And we, and we agonized over decisions. And, and, you know, we still had people asking for positions, you know. It was, it was really hard. And then you have positions you wanted to add, because there were programs that we were investing in, like our grow our own, grow our own for teachers. So, you know, there was a lot of give and take. We'd go up, and then we'd come down. You know, we were going up on cutting, and then we'd, it, it wouldn't be as much as we wanted, because there were things we needed to add back in. So it was a bit of a roller coaster. That's all I wanted to say.
Well, I just appreciate everyone who was involved, and I wish cutting the budget wasn't necessary. But thank you for doing it so delicately and so thoughtfully. And I think you're more than welcome to take a few days off now, sure.
Daniel?
And Daniel.
I've got seven and a half months' worth. Can I take?
Mr. Patton?
Hi. Well, this isn't shown here, but I do have a question in relation to HR. What was the total amount of the new teacher sign-on bonus that we gave this year?
I can answer that. It was five thousand dollars per new teacher that was fully cert, those that were fully certified. So Daniel can speak to the total.
Five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I really believe that that was a beneficial thing. I, I got to see Dr. Kinkanen and your department host new teacher orientation. And in years past, I've seen a bunch of young educators with what we call zero level experience, coming straight out of college. And it was encouraging to see more experienced people coming into Waco I S D who have taught several years in other districts. And I really think that sign-on bonus was beneficial to our district. And I know we're squeezing pennies and trying to make change out of dollars. But somewhere this, sometime this year, I would really like for us to reexamine and see if we cannot continue that. I think it, it helped attract people with experience. And that's only gonna trickle down to our students. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a very experienced group. We, I don't have the numbers on that, but it, you, it was visible. You could see it in the room, and that was the goal, was to draw in experienced teachers to Waco I S D.
Mr. Grant?
You could cut on me for a while before you get to anything critical, right? You could take pieces of me, and I've got a lot of fluff. This budget, at some point, and I think we're probably there, has been cut enough to where there's no fluff. The only way to offset that in the future is to raise the revenue side. I'd like for us to talk about a strategy, like we talked about a strategy for a logo and envisioning things, and it happened, about how we might be a voice towards raising revenue in the state, our district, and our city, and all those things. I really want us to come up with a campaign strategy on how we raise the six, the student allotment per deal, so that we can not just keep talking about this over and over. Because we've cut budgets every year, right? And, and the revenue, cost of living goes up, the revenue stays the same, which means we're, we have less, as we saw in the numbers earlier, thirty million dollars less since I've been on the board. And so I, I, I'd like for us to officially come up with some kind of strategy to sit, to, to tell the state and T E A that we cry uncle. I mean, there's not much more we can do without raising the fund, funding levels from the state.
Thank you.
It's funny, thirty-five years ago, when I presented my first budget, the board member asked me if there was fluff in the budget. And my answer was, it depends on your definition of fluff. For some people, that might be fine arts. For others, it might be athletics. But is there good things in this budget for kids? Yes, there is.
Yeah.
Well, Ms. Davis, thank you, because I think that's what we are in this for, is kids. And that is our, our budget should reflect our priorities. And it is very apparent that we are keeping the focus on our kids, on the programs, and the people who serve those kids. And, you know, I think right now, our legislature is about to start meeting for budgets. We have a legislative budget board along with state agencies, officials, your legislature's House and Senate speakers, who are going to be voting on that. So I think there is a ample opportunity to contact any one of those people in this, or every one of them in this state. Because right now, this is what they're doing. They're getting their values from their comptroller, much like we're doing, and getting budgets and what needs to be allocated where. And I think they have from now until, I believe, December to kind of get that written and allocated. So I think it would be a great time to, to reach out to people and just let them know that you're here. But Ms. Davis, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Kinkanen, this administration. I know I felt the stress of the budget cuts. I, I know that that money is people. It's not just fluff. I know that the, these are people's lives, and it's really important. And it felt weighty to me, and I didn't have to sit in those meetings. So thank you really for the way that you went about it, and the care and the concern, and probably at times, the passion that was in that. But I really want to thank each one of you and just this administration for really looking out for our kids. So thank you.
Can I say something really quick?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I just want to thank you for the work. I just want to say one of the strongest ways to make sure your vote, I mean, your voice is heard is to vote. Voter registration deadline is October the seventh. So please make sure you're registered to vote, and please make sure your voice is heard at the polls, so we can make some change for our kids there as well.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Davis, I believe you have the next item.
The last thing, you have the notice of the public meeting to discuss the budget, the proposed tax rate. And then you've also got the calculation that the Tax Office provides for us of those tax, of those rates. And so all, we've kind of gone over some of these numbers. We'll go over them a little bit more, the public hearing, the remaining numbers. But basically, all you need to do now, and we just recommend that you approve the notice of the public meeting to discuss the budget and tax rate, and set that meeting date for August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M in the Waco I S D administration building.
Great. I will entertain a motion.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Davis, for all of your work. Moving on to item number eight, review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five compensation. Dr. Lopez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Every year, we, we are to bring to you the compensation manual for approval. And today, we are bringing you that manual. It's a little shorter this year, but we are proposing a salary increase for the teacher pay scale at a six hundred dollar increase, with a starting pay for zero-year teachers at fifty-three thousand dollars. We're also asking for an increase or, and some added stipends in the following areas. Our hard-to-fill positions, special education, including self-contained, early childhood special education, functional academics achieve, and functional academics aspire teachers to be moved from three thousand dollars to four thousand dollars for a stipend, added deaf-blind intervener specialist for six thousand dollars, and moved from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars for inclusion resource teachers with case management duties. We're also asking for an ad of a strategic reading specialist for eight thousand dollars. These were before-year-two-reading recovery teachers. And then a district librarian lead for seven thousand dollars. That will be additional duties placed upon and a librarian within the district to take on the duties from a librarian who retired, who we were using to pay ESER funds for.
We cut the position.
We cut the position.
The coordinator. We kept the librarians, but we cut the coordinator.
And then, of course, career and technology, three different levels. This is just to get it in line with our stipends versus extra duty pay. We ask that you approve the annual compensation plan as presented.
Great. I will entertain a motion.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll give it to Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant, or questions? Any discussion or questions, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Vedanya? Any questions or discussion, Mr. Gillery?
No.
Any questions or discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any questions or discussion, Mr. Patton?
What is the extra duty per hour?
It depends on the, the position in which they're using, doing the extra duty in.
It's in the manual.
It's in the manual and toward the back. Teachers get thirty-five dollars an hour. If you're doing curriculum writing, thirty-five dollars. After-school program coordinators, twenty-five dollars. It varies on the position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez. Okay, is that it? All right, I think that's it. Announcements.
We have any announcements?
Evening, President Cordowig, Dr. Kinkanen, trustees. Happy August. Thank you to those of you that came out to Kendrick today for the community beam signing. That beam is already topped out. They moved it into place. At six oh one or six oh two, Wendy, we got the pictures from Stephanie Hines and Margarita Ramirez that were still there on site. And so that Kendrick is topped out, and it's going along. Tonight was also Meet the Teacher. So thank you to all the families that visit all our elementary Meet the Teacher nights. Coming up Monday night is our secondary Meet the Teacher. There is about a thirty-minute additional window there for any families that may be getting in between those middle and high school campuses. I know in addition to visiting Carver and visiting Caesar Chavez, Tennesse Middle School will be open for their Meet the Teacher on Monday night. Be an exciting night for everyone to walk through. Thank you to those that came for those board tours as well. And then we start, we start school August fourteenth. That's next week, so we're ready. Our buses are ready to roll, and our teachers are ready to greet students. So please make sure, we're still doing that last-minute push for registration, and then bus registration as well. All, families can find that information on our website in links. We've texted it out to them. We're trying to get the word out there. But bus registration is something new for us, and something that we will need in advance of that first day of school. So August fourteenth, kids come, and then we will see you again for a special meeting on August fifteenth.
Thank you. That's great.
Did they pour the, the, the bus? Did they pour the, the, the bus?
Our lane around Tennyson, it's in. Got a text from Gloria this morning, that it's done.
Great. Well, that's, lots of exciting stuff. Was at the Kendrick beam signing, saw Tennyson, so excited for the kids and teachers, everyone in, who are gonna be using that facility. It is absolutely gorgeous. And I, we went to the beam signing today for Kendrick. It was hot, so kudos to you guys who stayed. But I could see, I could see it. I could see how it's gonna be just a fantastic building for our teachers and our staff, and I'm so excited about it, and excited for the start of school. So, happy first week of school, you guys. Okay, thank you. With that, yep, we're adjourned.